I would like to introduce the State Department of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, a country, and a free democracy, just for all.
Welcome everyone to a regular session of Golden Dale City Council for April 4th, 2022. We have one council member missing and you have contacted us that he would not be able to be here tonight. And the next item is something we very rarely have, but this is a public hearing and it's on the vacation of Grant Street. And I'll turn this over to our Larry Bell, Mayor, so the administrator for the introduction of the materials.
Of the materials.
Yes, of the materials. Okay, just a moment.
I'd like to move that we excuse Andy for this evening.
Oh, totally forgot. Good. A second to excuse Andy. Here we go. Thank you. Okay, now... I always wondered what that question looked like when I turned over there. Where is he going? Okay, Larry.
Okay, this is a public hearing regarding the request by Clicktack County to vacate Grant Street between Court and Allen Street. And a couple council meetings ago, about a month ago, I think it was on the 7th of March, Clicktack County submitted a request, a petition to vacate South Grant Street between West Court and West Allen. And the purpose, the purpose of that was to add more parking spaces for Clicktack County buildings in that general area. At that meeting, the application was presented, or the petition was presented and set for public hearing by resolution. And the resolution, council members, is noted as item number two on the packet of materials that I sent you earlier, that I gave you tonight. So it indicates that the public hearing was set for April 4th, which is today at the hour 7:00 PM, 2022. So on item, on this background materials, pages three and four are the street vacation petition. And then page five is just a picture of the Grant Street from the, an area view of Grant Street as it appears now, and it is the area to be vacated by the proposed petition for vacation. Then on page six, it describes the process that you must follow in order to vacate a street in a city. And as I mentioned before, the resolution was passed, which set the time for tonight at 7:00 PM on April 4th. And that time was at least, at least 20 days after the day of passage of the resolution and not more than 60 days. So the actual time that it was posted was, I believe, 3:15, so on March 15th. It was posted in the newspaper and also posted in three mostly public spaces in towns. We chose City Hall, we chose Clicktack County, and we chose the US Postal Service. So we had notices up there regarding this, this street vacation process. Then if you look at your materials again on page number seven, the hearing is to be held before the legislative authority. So I basically highlighted those areas where it talks about legislative authority and the key portions of RCW 3579030. And the legislative, the petition for, the hearing on the petition is before the legislative body, and that is the city council. And then if you go down further in the middle of that paragraph, it says that the legislative authority determines to grant the petition. If the legislative authority determines to grant the petition, the city shall be authorized by ordinance and may provide that it not become effective until the owners of such, owners of property abutting the street or alley shall compensate the city or town in amount not to exceed one half of the appraised value in the area so vacated. So then you ask, okay, how much, what is that appraised value? And we conferred, it felt like that the purchase of the property at, behind Columbia, Columbia Bank, which is the current parking lot, it, it was owned by Columbia Bank and the county bought that piece. So we felt like that was a good value to use for an appraised value. And so they, so when you take the appraised value and multiply it out by $3.29 per foot, per square foot, and you multiply it by 66 times 200, which is the area of the, area of the property that is to be, is requested to be vacated, you get $21,714, which is 50% of the appraised value, which that indicates. However, it does create, it does give you an option that if the street or alley has been a dedicated public right of way for 25 years or more, then the city may require the owner of the abutting property, abutting street to compensate the city in an amount that does not exceed the full appraised value of the area to be vacated. So if you chose 50%, that would be $21,714 for compensation to the city. And if it, if you choose the 100% appraised value, it would result in an amount of $43,428 to be compensated to the city.
Larry?
Got a question. On that appraisal from that property from the bank, when was that?
Actually, Gordy knows that answer better than I do.
Yeah, it was, I think, 2019 or 2020, kind of the change of the year.
Okay, so I believe that concludes my remarks, the staff presentation, and we'll go next to the incentives of public hearing and we'll go next to the advocate.
Advocate's testimony. And I, Kelsey.
So thank you for considering our petition tonight. I, I just want to be available to answer any questions that you might have. I think we went over the, the layout and, and what our goals were when we tried to set up the parking lot last time I was here. So if you have any questions on what we're proposing, I want to be able to answer those for you.
Are there any questions from council for Mr. Kelsey?
Were there multiple design options or was this the one design option that was looked at?
We looked at different options, yeah, to try, we, the goal was to try and maximize the space for parking. And it worked best since it's really kind of narrow. We have one two-way and then one one-way access, just because of the width that we have available. So you're limited.
Right. And closing it off altogether added how many spots versus can it open to traffic?
So if we keep it open to traffic, then we, it's really not, I mean, it's, we probably would have done something different because then it's, it's really still the road. So we wanted to improve safety for a parking lot and really, we struggled during the construction phase with the different one-ways that we put in. I might be standing out there, we have the one-way signs out and, and I'm pointing at the sign to people that are coming through, you know, the opposite direction. So, and that happened numerous times. So I don't, I think we recognized at that time, it was hard to change people's driving habits.
Sure. Is there a way to vacate it but allow ingress and egress from both Court and Allen?
There was a request to look at that and so, you know, if we did something like that, we'd want to offset the other entrance so it doesn't look like a through street. So the problem is, we don't have enough room on the other leg or aisle for two-way. So basically you're bringing people in opposite direction of a one-way. So that's probably not a great idea either. So if we had more width, we could do more, but we're, we're kind of hemmed in from the jail on one side and the existing residents on the west side.
Yes, Steve?
I've been led to understand that there was consideration for the county to purchase some of those lots adjacent there that those single white trailers are on. What is the status on that?
Yeah, so we, when we were looking at, the commissioners wanted us to look at saving Annex 1, if some developer was interested in purchasing that, you know, that's still part of our plan. So we would have purchased that in addition to, not in replacement of. I mean, we, three years ago, when we started looking at, you know, where, what made the most sense, that was really kind of that turning point where we started narrowing in on an option. You know, we looked at, you know, can we buy other properties? You know, there's one house between the bank lot and the fire station that is an existing residence that would have had to been bought out and moved. And then we chose the, the option to purchase was one vacant lot and then a older home that was a rental on the corner there of Grant and Court. And so, you know, there aren't a lot of options without relocating a lot of people. So that seemed to be the best option at the time. So we had discussions with the city to talk about the option of vacating the street. And then our official request went in last August. But yeah, we did look at other options, but you're limited. And if we're trying not to relocate people, we chose the least amount of relocation.
So that's, that option is, that's off the table?
Yeah, like I said, it was only a replacement for, not tearing down Annex 1, not for the Grant Street vacation. It would have added to that lot.
Ma'am?
Stephen, does the fire department have any concerns at all about this or any?
Well, I think that'd be a better question for Noah.
Yeah, right.
I haven't been in the loop on this a lot, so I think there's always a concern though.
Okay.
Because I, I would have a concern.
Yeah, okay, okay. Just the idea that it would be difficult, you'd have to pick another street to take the fire trucks down then, yeah, okay.
But as I remember, the, one of the main problems that the fire department has with the way the street currently is right there is that, what you call it, that abutment that comes out, that's going to be solved by this?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be removed and it'll be, I think, three feet sticking out. So you'll end up, it'll be, still be a wider road than it was before we started.
Right, right.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I have a question. If, if the fire department had an issue with getting through, would there be a possibility of, on the south side of Allen, like making one of those spots a no parking area and rounding that sidewalk there?
So you're talking about the, where Grant Street is?
Grant and Allen. If, if the fire department was to have an issue with, you know, that road being blocked, the feasibility, feasibility of having a no parking area there with a rounded sidewalk that would facilitate, you know, going over and through, a lot of cities have that where.
So I think there's a rolled curb on the Allen Street side for the, your parking project and the water line upgrade a few years back. And I think we'll continue that a little farther toward the jail. And so, I mean, you could put rolled edge on the parking lot side too. But then I think you start running the risk of other people
Right.
cutting through. But it's possible, yes.
Well, we would have to hear from, from the chief to see if that's, if that's a major concern, if that, you know, if that's an option that they would want.
It's possible.
I mean, it would just take out like a parking spot from, from the plan, right?
Any other questions or comments?
We will have opportunity to comment about this later.
Oh, yes, we'll have a discussion at the close.
Is there a map or drawing of the final layout, proposed layout?
I might get it to you. Our county network was down today, so I couldn't print out some more updated versions. It hasn't changed much. I think we have a version now that shows where the street, or the lights, streetlights inside the parking lot will be, but it's, this lot is fairly close to what it, what it was when I presented last month. But I'll get you an updated version.
Is there anyone in the public that wanted to speak in favor of this vacation of Grant Street?
Actually, we need to do, we need to ask if there are any proponents that would like to, any other proponents?
Speak in favor, propose. Are there any? Yes, sir.
Darryl Watson, I reside at 712 Franklin Court. I have a question. Is the services building meeting requirements for parking according to the plan that was submitted at this time without dedicating or vacating that street?
Well, that's kind of an interesting question, Gordy. You can help me if I can leave out a few pertinent facts. But first of all, the zoning behind, the zoning is central business district.
Right.
And in that central business district, we had issues for quite some time regarding the requirement for parking. So we took away the parking requirement so that wouldn't be a hindrance to other businesses locating in the downtown area.
Therefore, you're saying that any business that locates there isn't required to maintain a certain number of parking spaces, as would be, say, in R1 or an R2 district?
Correct.
Okay.
So let me finish however.
Okay.
To say just a couple more points. We felt like, that in the site plan, and reviewed in the site plan, we felt that it was more important to add parking spaces to the existing number that we had. So when we, before we started, it was 179, is that correct?
175.
175. And then when we did all the figuring, we actually ended up with more, and I forget the 230 something.
207 or something like that.
Anyway, the reason for that was due to, on court days, there was always people complaining that there weren't enough parking spaces for them to utilize the facilities and be able to park when they were picking the juries. And that was one of the concerns that we had. We wanted to increase the parking, so we actually increased the parking. The, the other thing that we've done is we've made the area more suited for overflow parking from Main Street. Because we also hear that Main Street parking is quite full at times. And if the employees can park in the, any of the public parking spaces at the courthouse, if your business is on Main Street, then you could actually park in the public parking areas. And that was another reason why we wanted to increase the number of parking spaces. So by, by vacating Grant Street, then we were going to increase a lot of parking spaces that are needed both by the courthouse and that general area.
Okay. So I would submit to you that I think vacating this street is not a good policy. I believe that accommodating them in this way is almost like a special preference. I'd almost called this one block thing that we've sort of gotten into a habit of doing, almost like spot zoning. Pardon my language. So I'm speaking against the proposal. I, I know that we have other businesses in town that have complained about parking, especially on Main Street as you, and we just have to work around that. I don't know how else you could do it. If you could get some of those properties vacated and put more parking lots in, that's fine. But I don't think this is a good solution. I hope the council turns it down.
Anyone else here to voice opposition to this proposal?
Do I have a caller on the phone that'd like to say something?
Just a moment. We have a person called right now, we'll get to you.
My name is Matt Childs. I'm speaking as a head trustee of the Nazarene Church, and I would also like to voice opposition to the proposal. I'm not categorically opposed to the idea of vacating Grant Street and putting in a parking lot there, but the way it's currently designed is going to definitely impact our church. And I have been in talks with the head librarian and they agree that it will impact the library too, when they have big events, because there is no access to this parking lot from Allen Street. And it's the community parking lot and we are in the central business district, as, as we're talking about. But without the access here, it leaves very little convenient access for overflow library and especially for the Nazarene Church. The other parking immediately across the street is reserved for sheriff's office vehicles, so that's not really available to anybody but them. We would like to see access at least going into this proposed new parking lot from West Allen Street. And I think it would be good policy to have parking going in and out. I realize that for a parking lot, you don't want it to be a through street, but I think those issues can be addressed by things such as offsetting the entrance to the parking lot, so it's not lining up with Grant Street. Having the entrance to the parking lot go up and over a sidewalk, so it's obviously not a street, but you're obviously entering into a parking area. You're always going to have some people cutting through. There are people who cut through the courthouse parking lot in front of the courthouse all the time, I'm sure. I have done it myself. And I'm probably not the only person in this room who has. Speaking of that parking lot, if, if Grant ends up being closed completely here, a lot of Grant traffic, I think, will end up being diverted right through that parking lot. And, and really, we're just moving the problem to a different spot. As far as I know, there haven't been any studies even looking at how much traffic is going up and down the street on a regular basis, how often the fire department and the police department may use that street, and how it's going to impact them. I could be mistaken on that though. Uh, let's see, make sure I'm covering everything I wanted to cover. Oh, also, I'm, I'm concerned that blocking Grant Street there, when people come down Allen from Columbus and they can't find parking, they're going to be diverting into a residential neighborhood and around the residential neighborhood to find parking in this other, in this other lot. And I don't think that's healthy for a residential neighborhood to have CBD traffic going throughout it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for comments? Yes, please.
I'm Teresa Hiberger. I live at 888 Maple Drive in Golden Dale and I am, I just have some questions. Is the cost for this project been calculated? Yes. And what are the current number of parking spaces that are over there right now?
Forty-two.
That are there right now?
Yeah.
It almost matches what we're going to do with the permanent fix. So this is a replacement, basically, of where the new building is. That used to be a big parking lot and this replaces that. So this lot really doesn't add new spots, it just replaces what was used for the building.
So how much will it cost to add no new spots?
Add no new spots?
Yeah, you said it's not really going to change the number of parking spots.
There's about $600,000 for all the rest of our parking improvements, which includes where we removed the old juvenile building and economic development that's currently being moved out. And then where planning and building departments used to be over at Golden and Main Street.
So to not really increase the number of parking spots, you're spending $600,000, is that what I'm hearing?
No, we'll have about 100 more spots available.
So within that section between Allen and?
I think she's asking how many, how many parking spots are in
Right on the west side of
This exact section.
That little piece of street you're wanting to block off and turn all that into parking space.
There'll be 40, about 45.
And how many there now?
About that many, as a, on a temporary basis.
So it's not really improving the number of parking in that specific situation?
It's, yeah, because the road isn't really, the vehicles park on part of the road currently. So it's not wide enough in its configuration where everything's shoved. The jail parking is too short. And so the vehicles stick out into the road essentially.
And they park on the sidewalk too.
Yeah.
So you have a handicap safety hazard there.
Could that be simply designated compact only and that spot would that resolve that particular piece?
I, I have put up compact signs and people just ignore things like that. That's why it's, it's hard to change people's behavior unless you actually change what they can and can't do, because they just continue to do what feels comfortable. So like we talked about cutting through, people will continue to do that. Unfortunately, no matter what we do. And people, some people will obey the signs and some people won't. And that's what we're seeing.
I live at 888 Maple Drive and I would be against this proposal to get rid of Grant Street, unless there is an option to, for the parking lot to be accessed from Allen. And I think that would be a better solution to have that access off of Allen so that would, when people are done with their business downtown, they would go out that way instead of coming back into the downtown area. So I think that's a better solution.
I've got somebody waiting on the phone and I'll get you next. Yes, somebody was asking for the floor from the telephone.
You guys waiting for me?
Yep.
The sound is very bad. I, I can't hear anything, so I remember someone hanging up. But if you do hear me, I kind of hate to lose the, the use of Grant Street, but if you do decide to, to do the deal, get the higher amount of money, don't go for half the assessed value, go for the full assessed value. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not hearing you guys at all, so have a good night. Good night. Good night.
Please.
My name is Sunday Sutton. I live at 714 East Main. I also am a member of the Nazarene Church. So that is my interest here. Also, I work in the downtown business area as well. I, I am opposed to the egress, or at least without it having access from both streets for many of the reasons already stated here. And I, I do see the traffic, I do I do understand that it is hard to change people's behavior, and I don't know, I don't know that these, that cutting off the, both roadways is going to do that and give you the added benefit, because it's not really increasing parking. So if you're moving forward with this, I would encourage access from both streets, because, one, our community needs that access, and, two, you're, we're your neighbors. You know, we've shared that space, the church and the courthouse, and we've been great neighbors, but to cut that off and cut off access for the church, to me, would be a travesty and not very neighborly.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any others to speak on this issue? Yes, please.
Well, it depends on what hat I'm wearing right now. So I'm going to speak on a citizen hat, not a commissioner hat.
Okay.
Hard to keep track of, I should take the tag off. This plan was proposed by the previous board of commissioners. I personally don't like this plan. I tried to change this plan, I was outvoted. So on the personal side, I don't want to lose the through traffic, but on the commissioner's side, the first thing you learn is, don't try to be an engineer, because if you're trying to be an engineer without knowing the laws and the safety and whatnot, you're going to find yourself in litigation, because you let your personal overweight an engineer's training.
Exactly.
So that's on the commissioner's side, and my seatmates both still approve this per land, so I'm here to answer any questions on that behalf. So that's that hat, that's that hat. It's up to you guys.
Nice hat show. Thank you, Dan. Anyone else here to speak on the issue of vacating Grant Street, that one block? I don't hear anymore, either from the phone or from the room. We've had proponents and opponents. Larry, do you have anything else you want to say? It's just wish otherwise we'll close the hearing.
No, I think that, I just need to hear from the council with regards to this. As I stated before, we were trying to maximize parking, and that was in order to meet the demands of the public, on some sides of the public. We're hearing from some public who live closer, or who have business close to the area, go to church close to the area, or residents close to the area, that are saying, well, maybe the number of parking spaces doesn't matter as much as having more access to that general area. So I think it's just going to have to be a decision by you guys to give us what your preference is with regard to the parking situation down in, down at the courthouse, down and around the courthouse.
Yes. And your preference may be an additional opening, or we've heard a number of possibilities from the speakers.
Yes, so I just have a comment, and I'll be really careful, because I'll be abstaining from voting on this, but just on listening to the concerns, I figure I could give some suggestions, and not really council, but the county. Obviously, one of the suggestions or concerns from the church is access to the parking, and they mentioned the law enforcement parking on the inside, and I don't know if an option would be to move that reserved parking area to the back of the building, and opening that side right in front of Nazarene Church to be for the public, and maybe that can address some of their concerns to more parking spots right by their church. I don't know, that would be, you know, I don't know if that would help the Nazarene Church, depending on which way it goes, but I think if that's one of the concerns, definitely that would litigate, mitigate that issue. And that would be just, I think, again, in my opinion, not an engineer, would be a matter of just moving some signs over. That's it, otherwise, I don't have an opinion either way.
If there are no other comments or questions, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have a discussion among the council.
All right, this council going, continuing to discuss this?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
It's a program, yes, sorry. I have an answer sheet here. So with that, Larry, we'll open discussion among the council members on what you feel about this situation. You've got the, all the material that's available, and you may see the possible solutions that would please both sides, hard to know. Anyone have anything to say?
It's our opportunity now for council.
It's just the council, we've had a chance to hear the public, but we're also going to have the council discuss what the public's views are as well, to help them.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all these folks for showing up and being concerned, and I concur with the opposition. Personally, myself, I'm opposed to it. First of all, I don't think from the original agreement set forth that the city is incumbent to relinquish any property to help achieve this parking situation. Secondly, it is going to impact, negatively impact, traffic flow, and it will for the fire department, for law enforcement, for the public. And thirdly, I see it more as a convenience than anything, and I can't blame them for trying to get a few more parking spots closer to work, but not at, not at the cost that it's going to present to the city in the whole.
Sure.
And yes, I object to it wholeheartedly.
Any other from the council opponent or opponent view?
I guess I'd be curious to see some other design alternatives that might allow at least egress onto Allen Street, concerned about traffic in the afternoons through Court Street and downtown, and Mr. Childs raised a good point about the converting traffic through the residential neighborhoods, so maybe some other alternatives that might allow access into that parking lot from both streets, but not totally opposed to the vacation of the street if we can accomplish that.
Yeah, that's what I think, too. I agree with Lauren. I mean, I'm not opposed to the vacate of the street necessarily, but so many people have raised concerns that I hadn't really thought about. They make some pretty good points, and I won't be able to support this plan as it is here today. I'm not saying I'd be opposed to it forever, but too many people have raised a bunch of concerns that I'd have to think more about, that I hadn't thought about before necessarily, because it's not fair to, you know, it's not fair to do that church that way. So as it is now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support the plan as presented to us.
I want to ask Mr. Kelsey, are we interpreting the map, the picture correctly? Are we missing something in the engineering that you want to let us know about?
That's all.
Yeah, just, just trying to look at safety, and that's really one of the bigger things that we try and look at, and, you know, if you, people are going to drive through there if we open that up, and it's, if it's a parking lot, it's a parking lot, and if it's a street, it's a street. And so really, there, we're talking about basically two different things. So if we open it up, I mean, there might be a secondary access option that we can look at, but if it's, if we want to leave Grant Street open, then it'll remain a street like it is now, because there's really not a lot we can do without the whole space, you know, so we'll have, you know, I know that the city has been after us to do something different with those short stubby spots against the jail. You know, do we look at turning that back into parallel parking to keep the cars out of the road, and then leave the parallel parking on the other side, and then just establish or develop the one access point where we bought property where the, to the west of Grant Street? You know, that might be an option, unless we can figure out how to make a one-way access or some access from Allen onto that parking lot. But like I said, if we leave it where it is at Grant Street, then it's really still Grant Street is open.
Right, as it's a regular street.
Yeah.
But dividing that into two parking lots with no through access, or at least access and ingress and egress from both Allen and Court, but no ability to drive all the way through, that way it serves both neighborhoods and directs traffic, shares traffic between the north and south sides of the block.
So what you're saying is essentially a south entrance, not on Grant, but in the gravel parking lot, and then maintain the north entrance on Grant, is that what you're saying? That way you have it coming both directions, just not both on Grant.
So you block it here, this way, so you can come in and out from Allen, but you can't drive all the way through, and you can come in and out from Court, but you can't drive all the way through.
We'll have to look at it, but you'll, you'll have more road than parking.
You'll lose some parking spots.
Yeah.
But I like the idea.
Well, Mayor, I, yeah, comment by comment, I oppose closing Grant Street until, but future, there may be another option, and like Gordon said, you know, so that's the way I have to, you know, someday we might be able to figure out another solution here.
I would agree with my seatmates that closing this street is really not a very good idea.
We don't have any in support of this.
Well, I would recommend that you postpone the decision until we get revised engineering down on the options.
We'll go back to the board with your suggestions, and hopefully bring back a plan that meets your suggestions.
I think, I don't know, with the Nazarene Church, other than Sunday, the meeting days, but more than likely that, that parking area is going to be vacant during most church meeting times, I would think, but I don't know, I don't belong to that church, so.
More than likely, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it may be something that can be worked out, because of the schedules, there are different schedules for each side of this discussion.
So like, I've got a couple of comments.
Sure.
One is, was there a discussion about a one-way option? Did you hear that, Gordy?
We had, we talked about one-way, one-way options, because we tried those out during construction for the last couple of years. So they, on Grant Street, they don't work very well. It just don't. They may work if there's a one-way through, offset from the through route, it's just not as convenient, but, so, because we have a one-way that comes off of Court and heads south toward Allen, but makes that turn at the end and comes back, if that went one-way out, that doesn't really help us, so.
So really, it's either don't vacate any of it, or vacate it altogether.
I don't know without looking at it again. I mean, we, we talked about it, I mean, we tried to maximize the space for parking, that was kind of our goal, and then not have that through route from Grant Street through the parking lot, because then it's really like the road's still there. So, I mean, we can look at options, but I really don't have anything for you tonight.
So commissioner hat back on. When, when I brought this up to my seatmates that I didn't like this plan, I wanted to look into some of the options you guys were saying, and the proposal by the board was leave it the way it is, if you guys deny it, we'll look into those options. So my take from this and writing down the notes that you all gave, will be going back to my seatmates, and I'm sure Gordy's will be the same, is that you didn't like the plan, here's were some of your concerns, and hopefully, we can come up with a couple other options that then can be presented, that lets you guys pick what works out best for what you think, what I think, what citizens think, and go that route. So I'm actually tickled pink that it is going this way, because I have the same concerns as they do.
Sure.
So that would be my recommendation, is let us take this back, look at it, if we need to remove some of the parking spots and downsize, find whatever it takes to make everybody happy on this deal, so. Right, and it might still have a Grant Street vacation piece, it might have access in the north side here and the south side there, so it isn't through, but let us talk about it as a, as a board next week, and then get with him, and he can draw out some things, and then we'll come back before you.
If, if, I guess if the goal, I mean, our, our goal all along, when we started the whole building project, was we don't have enough parking, and that was really what drove a lot of things that we've done and why we're here tonight. And so if that really isn't a goal as much as it was when we first started, you know, we can adjust, I mean, that's, I'm okay with that, but we heard, we don't have enough parking, we need more, the Main Street businesses would like to see more, so that's kind of what drove this, so.
I do have one question that, that I had a concern with, but I haven't heard from you guys, so I would be curious to hear from you guys. Right now on Grant Street, it's diagonal parking. The proposal is to change it to straight-in parking. I personally don't like straight-in parking, I drive a big truck and I can't get in straight-in parking. Do you guys have a concern with straight-in parking, or are you fine with straight-in parking? What, what does our next proposal do you need to see? Straight-in parking, diagonal parking, is that even an option in either one of your thoughts?
If I can reply, and then I'll, I don't drive a fire truck, but I've many times been going down streets that were a little narrow, and if it's straight-in or even diagonal, and it's one of those 18 or 20-foot-long pickups, you've had a lot of trouble getting around that, or seeing around it if it's at the corner. So the more visibility would be part of the safety factor, I would be.
Well, I think it's pretty much proven itself, that diagonal parking works better all around than straight-in. I mean, there might be some applications, there's some parking areas where straight-in works just fine, if you've got a lot of room to back out, especially, diagonal usually goes with the direction of the flow of the traffic going outside the street, so, yeah, diagonal parking definitely is the best objective there. What about, here's a consideration, on the, on the west, on the west side there, or, yeah, it's obvious that the vehicles are sticking out into the street on, actually, both sides, a little more than necessary, but on the west side, move the sidewalk. So you can get off the street a little more, not blocking.
No, it's not playing on my phone.
I mean, just a suggestion, I mean, I'm still totally, totally opposed to vacating the street under a circumstances, but.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just, where the conversation is going, and thinking back to previous conversations, when it was going to be one-way, you know, it was going from two-way to one-way to restricted spacing, one of the concerns that you mentioned was fire vehicles going through and being wide enough, and one of the concerns is trucks or something larger sticking out and making that even narrower, so that was a concern in the past to remember. The other concern that was brought up was by the businesses in downtown of not enough parking, and that's where it was mentioned, that was the driving force, because in prior years, it was brought by the businesses on Main Street that there's not enough parking, and they were concerned about the parking spots being taken where the building is now. So everybody should, when you make your decisions, as I mentioned, I'm not going to, um, vote into this, but that was a concern that was brought in previous meetings. And then the other one is just that there are ADA requirements to be met for equal accessibility across sidewalks. And currently, um, as mentioned, that sidewalk is being blocked by vehicles, and on the opposite side is gravel, which is, does not make any of it ADA compliant, which is a federal law that should be met.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess to get back to Gordy's point about parking, I think parking is still a priority. I still hear a lot of comments, concerns about parking, how much parking there is available on the downtown area, but, um, when it starts to restrict access or, or not restrict, yeah, restrict access for some, uh, areas of downtown or starts to force a lot of traffic through the downtown areas, then, then, you know, we should start weighing different concerns. And I wonder if there's other private lots that might be available to purchase to add parking downtown, or what other solutions might be available to, um, increase the parking that's available. And I guess you have us there, we'll probably call upon the city for purchasing that parking, but.
At least to provide what information we can.
Yeah. Uh, but I guess still a priority to add parking, but just kind of weighing out all the different opinions that we hear and try and find solutions that work best for everyone which will never be accomplished, but.
I, I, I have no doubt that if, if this parking spot or space now presented is forty spaces, and we go back to the drawing board and try to get the width and try to get the sidewalk and try to get the egress, ingress, we're going to lose spaces. It's going to be twenty-five, thirty max, so know that going in, but we're still going to be up from what it was two years ago. So I'm fine with that.
I appreciate the efforts, Ken, to make sure people have safety and to find a solution. I think that will help the people that came forward that are having issues with the vacation of that street.
Mayor, I would like to see, uh, all these other parking lots that they're potentially working on now, uh, when they get completed or available to park, and then we have more of a reality of just, do we have enough, or are we still going to have to be looking for additional parking? Because we have, what, two lots now, at least two lots that are under construction, and, you know, you mentioned earlier, you know, the economic building and then the old PUD building and, I don't know, anything else potentially.
Just this one, just the one we're talking about tonight.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Well, anyway, it'd be nice if we get those finished, uh, and then we'll just have to see where, where we are.
Yeah, long-term, just to give you kind of an idea, um, the building where at least economic development is, um, this will be hopefully moving by the end of the week or two. Um, that may end up being a county-only fenced fleet parking lot for fleet vehicles, so you don't know that yet. Um, that's my goal over the years to have a fleet department and get rid of some of our vehicles and have a, a motor pool, you might say, which would then be in that spot, so that would eliminate, I think, twenty-five parking spots.
Well, would that pre-up, uh, because right now you're parking the county vehicles on the bank, old bank parking lot. And would that pre-up public parking if we're going to put the county vehicles where they're going on?
Some, because some of the vehicles parked at the bank are public works that are parked there overnight until the workers get there, but some of our fleet vehicles don't move often enough. Um, you know, we have a department that has two vehicles that they each drive twenty-five-hundred miles a year.
Yeah.
Um, so they're obviously taking up parking spots when they're not moving, so, uh, that's part of the fleet thing is hopefully we can get rid of ten or so vehicles, which would flee up ten or so parking spots from, from not being used. But that's a next-year thing nowadays.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your work, guys, taught us sort through this.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Gordy's disappointed, but we'll get it fixed.
But you can't, you're, you're, you'll be looking for solutions that, that helps everybody, public and county vote. With this, uh, public hearing, we need a motion, uh, to record the votes. I don't think anyone is in support of the proposal as a stance now. I heard, right?
Right.
And you're going to abstain, right?
You're going to abstain, but what would be the motion? Is it going to be to go one way or another, or to table?
I'd say to table.
Well, I would say to table too, because you all asked for more information and we need to see some new alternatives to be presented and take a look at what's there now and what could be there in the future, given the parameters that we're discussing tonight.
So we need a motion for that?
Yes, to table the, table the action.
Okay, I saw moved and re-tabled from time to time.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, so we can second it to table this particular issue with the vacating Grant Street until a later date, uh, in interest of, uh, engineering, uh, solutions that may come forth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have stated or no?
One abstained and one named.
Now, why don't we get opposed?
Oh, I stated one opposed, under any circumstances.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's rather just waiting till it's solved, yeah.
My opinion will not change, way down and when we bring it up again.
Okay. It'll be the court, there's a name. The rest in favor of finding a solution. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on. No comments. The next item is the, uh, motion for approval of the agenda and consent agenda later. There's a discussion before we make that motion. Thanks, everyone.
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll second.
We moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this city council session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We don't have presentations, we'll go to department reports, and we'll hear first from our police chief, Jay Hansiker.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, uh, one thing I got tonight, uh, there is a group here, I'm going to read it from the pamphlet and stuff. Um, it's called TIP, okay, and it stands for the Trauma Intervention Program Northwest, okay? And what is TIP? Trauma Intervention Program is a group of specialized or specially trained and thoroughly screened citizen volunteers who provide emotional and practical support to survivors of traumatic events and their families in the first few hours following a tragedy. TIP volunteers are called through the emergency response system by police, firefighters, and hospital personnel. TIP is a national nonprofit tax-exempt organization. Services are available to survivors and their families free of charge and are made possible by donations by local government, businesses, and individuals. Uh, Trauma Intervention Program of Portland slash Vancouver Incorporated was founded in nineteen ninety-two. Hundred and eighty local volunteers are available to respond immediately to crisis situations on a twenty-four-hour, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-year basis. Basically, uh, what they're doing, if we have a traumatic, uh, situation here, whether it be law enforcement, uh, deal firefighting or ambulance, major accident or something, you've got trauma to families, right? Families show up at the scene, right? These folks here will respond to us and assist by helping dealing with the families and helping them through this crisis while either law enforcement, firefighters, EMS or some are still working on the scenes, uh, that involve, you know, traumatic situations. Okay, for a while along there, it's moved further up into the gorges, it's now going to be available to the Cooketec County area. So I've been in contact with one of the representatives here that gave out the pamphlets. I've talked with Jeff King, uh, emergency services, uh, nine-one-one center is very key on this because they're the ones more likely are going to get the call from the law enforcement firefighter saying, you know, notify TIP, we need responders. So anyways, my plan is, uh, we're in conjunction with, working with nine-one-one, right, the sheriff's office. Uh, state patrol's already aware of this, they use it down in Vancouver. Sergeant Bate Hovenhoff says it's a fantastic program, the WSP's had many, many great things come from the, the assistance of these people. So what I want to do is I'll coordinate with that individual, come give a whole presentation, right, and I want to bring him to the council, so he can tell you all about it, if you have any questions, but I think that's very valuable. It's no cost to the city and it's to help, excuse me, it's to help, uh, families that are, are going through a traumatic thing. So, yeah, any questions on this right now? All right, so I'll get that set up and hopefully we can get him. He's more than happy to come give a presentation, but let's get everybody together at one time, so he only has to come up here once and then get this thing on the roll and set up for our area. Okay? Thank you.
Now, if you have an extra one, or I'll give him mine, but Roger probably could use that.
Yes. I'll give him mine, I've got more at the office, but I've got something to give out to the, the sheriff's office and.
Very good. It's an excellent program.
Stephen, sorry.
Uh, no problem. Uh, just going to report on one thing, fire department. Fire department applied for the, uh, two, uh, twenty-twenty-two DNR Phase Two grant. Uh, we were awarded that grant for a total of six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. With that, um, the department will be getting four new chainsaws for their wildland vehicles and one replacement pump for, uh, our brush truck sixty-one fifty-three. In that grant, the, uh, the department's piece of the grant will be six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Very good. Wow. Very helpful, right?
Or like ten percent.
Excellent, excellent.
I'd like to say one more thing about this, this program here. Carmen Knotts from the jail, the superintendent of the jail, uh, sent this information out to all agencies, and then from there I made contact with them, so, uh, kudos to Carmen, she's really on top of things, and, uh, we're excited to get this, so, but Carmen's the one that really started the idea here, that's, all right, so I'll contact him and we'll set things up. So, just wanted to give that, the kudos.
That cooperation is really, really huge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into council business, and we are not acting on council business, right, Larry?
Um, we're already taken care of.
Yeah.
We're listed in the council business, yes.
Normally we'd have had another, another step. Uh, we'll go on now to report of officers, and we'll begin with our city manager, Larry Bellamy.
Okay, I wanted to touch on a couple of things. One is that, that bid, bid documents are out for, um, receipt of bids and for the Byers Street project, and those bid documents are due by those interested in bidding on the project on April, this Wednesday, April sixth. Um, and then the other thing I was noticing from the minutes was that there was a request to meet with the library subcommittee to discuss with that group some things that you guys wanted them to, to talk about. So my question is, do we want to be ahead of that inviting them to a group, or do you want me to suggest a couple of dates for us to meet with them? Basically what I'm saying is, do we want to be ahead of time to talk about what we need to?
Let's get ahead of time before meeting with the larger audience.
Okay, how, well, how many people are going to be involved in all us three?
That's what I was saying.
Our representative counsel. Uh, but certainly there are other folks that want to be involved.
Right.
And so, is this what we're talking about, uh, more or less as far as how many people or just the substance of, uh?
I'm not leaving, we're not proposing to leave them out, but we're just trying to get a lay of the land.
Set an agenda for that meeting.
Set an agenda.
Maybe have some fact-finding?
Yes, I think.
Uh, well, I called and apparently there has been a meeting, a date set, but no time for next Monday, well, the next two Mondays following the week of the council meeting. It would be the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, is what I was told. Has been established for dates, but no times.
I think we might have suggested something like that at the last council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, but you're right, we haven't come up with a time, or we discussed, uh, which of those dates we've used. I think what we're saying now is we're just saying, let's get an, an agenda.
Okay.
And so that we can all speak with knowledge and have everybody here to discuss the issues. Is that paired up, Steve?
Well, yes, yes, to a certain extent, uh, well, the people, citizens that brought this up in the first place, uh, have been involved firsthand already. They have gathered quite a bit of information already in regards to this. I think, uh, their information and their personal experiences is invaluable to what we want to hear. We've already heard of real, like, the presentation regarding this, so we know what the situation involves. Uh, I mean, so I, I don't have any hints establishing some kind of criteria, you know, prior to having a meeting, a meeting with the public, with the other citizens. In respect to that, I was going to wait until my term, but I will bring it up now, I've already requested, uh, the documents relating to the agreement between city and Fort Vancouver.
Okay. And I think we have a lease agreement with them.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see the documents.
What do you expect to see in that, though, a lease? A lease was done many, many years ago, wouldn't it? So what are we going to see on that lease?
I, I mean, I just. You might be surprised.
Well, I don't know. I, the lease is a lease, and I don't think they're going to talk about what kind of books can be in the library.
I still would like to see that lease agreement.
Yeah, it's up to you.
This issue doesn't just involve Golden Dale and Golden Dale's library, not by alarm shot. This is an issue from coast to coast.
The city council can't solve all that.
We're going to try our best.
Roger wants to add something.
A clarification question? Are you talking about having a, a full meeting, in which case you need to notify it, et cetera? Or are you talking about some of you meeting with them and then reporting back? Because I'm a little confused about what you had in mind.
I was, well, I think that we, if we have a meeting, we have to invite the public about that.
Certainly, certainly.
But the first meeting would have to be something that we're going to talk about, plan and, and agenda.
Certainly. And, and one person in particular, I think, the Olga Hodges, she was the primary, she spearheaded this and, uh, and she had a, a, at least a couple of, of folks with her that were, uh, pretty solid, so, and, and we're not talking about crowding, by any means, but. I do think, I say Olga, Hodges should be involved from the beginning.
Right, no, let, let anybody just be decided to talk.
Whether she's formed a group or, you know, we don't know at this time. Maybe we can fit up this outfit, we could, you know, nail a lot of this down and develop some sort of structure.
Right, so it's got to be.
So move forward.
I have a question, um, on that comment is, so we're talking about a subcommittee of the council, correct?
Correct.
So if a group has been formed separate, they can have their own group, however, the individuals need to be appointed by the mayor to the subcommittee, uh, to be part of the subcommittee. Is that correct? So we can't just invite our own people?
The mayor has already appointed the people to the subcommittee.
Okay, so if there's a group separate, then that's separate. So if there's a group separate, then that's separate than the subcommittee?
Separate from the subcommittee?
Yeah, Stephen said that Olga Hodges had maybe created her own group on the matter. So I just want to clarify, if there is such a group separate, we have an appointed subcommittee representing the council, correct?
Okay, I'm not exactly sure, but here's how I would answer that. I got the impression that there was an appointment for a special committee.
Right, on this issue.
Which is outlined in chapter 2.04 of the council code. And that special committee needs to have a goal. And once that goal is complete, then the special committee goes away. But we do need to establish what those goals are.
I would just clarify who the members on that committee is and not a individual group made by a...
Right, it's a special committee of the council.
Okay.
It would be Lauren, Dave, and Steve.
Right, and the folks you're referring to would be the public, basically.
Right, right, I mean, the public is welcome to participate. But you mentioned she had her own group created, and I just wanna... Okay, I just want to clarify that this group is not the subcommittee that was created.
No, it's the public.
And that we are represented in an organized fashion.
That's what we're doing before.
And I assume that the committee of this form has some sideboards based on the motion that was passed by the full council. So that committee will have to focus its goals within that motion.
Yes.
Okay, so then the meeting would be for the committee to develop what those walls are and what those goals should be and follow those parameters that were identified before.
But it does have to be open to the public.
Right.
It has to be notified, I can notify... So that's the other part of the discussion is, do you want to go on the 11th or the 25th?
I have no problem with the 11th at this point. Let's get her going.
Yeah, I mean, can we meet? The only thing I was getting at is, can the four of us, or mayor included, meet just to talk about what the goals are?
Meeting really needs to be open.
Right.
And have it noted in it. Like, if I give, if we decide on a time and a date tonight, then we've given notice.
Right.
And we still need to do that. You know, we may have a, part of the meeting might be to discuss the agenda and discuss the walls. And then manage the meeting in such a way that those that are attending that are maybe not on the committee but interested in the subject could come and they could have a say in what our decisions might be.
So you're saying the committee can't meet ahead of time to discuss the matter, do some fact finding, work out what that agenda might be?
Right.
That's the same with all of our committees. Always a public meeting. Very seldom does the public come, but occasionally there's a public interest in exactly what that committee is talking about.
It makes it difficult for the committee to get much done, but...
What does the subcommittee's name?
That will be something we'll have to be deciding.
Okay.
That'll be part of that meeting.
I didn't hear that there was a name, all I heard was library subcommittee.
Sounds good to me.
And that's the way it is written in the minutes.
Okay.
Right.
Well, at that point, would it be appropriate prior to this meeting or meeting to invite one or two or give notice to particular people? Or notify them, just notify them.
But isn't that your committee meeting?
Is that what we're doing right now in this public meeting?
Yes.
And in this discussion, you could talk about what the fact finding, what all...
We can't do any fact finding because we can't get together and talk. So, I don't know.
So, for your own material. I can present some materials ahead of time.
So you have a subcommittee to decide what fact finding you need and then create another meeting later on on what you find?
It's tricky.
I think Roger has the answer.
Maybe it'd be helpful to clarify, the RCW says that any committee or subcommittee of the public body is required to meet in public and be notified in advance. And that's why, and it's, I know it's a problem. It's a little bit easier when it's a smaller county or commission, but yeah, that's the rules. Because nobody wants stuff decided behind closed doors and in secret. I know you're all that way.
Committee of council can't make a decision, only the full council can make a decision.
No, but as long as, if you're working toward a decision or reporting to the larger body that will lead to a decision, then that makes it a required public meeting. Sorry, talk to the legislature.
But like without a quorum, you know, three council people can meet without there being a quorum just to have a conversation?
As long as it's an organized subcommittee, it has to be public. Even if it's not a quorum of the full body, I'm sorry, it's...
I understand, well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
If three of us went to lunch and just talked about lunch, that would be alright. But the minute we said anything about city business or anything official, we'd be in violation of the public...
And I think it's ironic, because people come in here and complain about how long the process takes, but then you're unable to make progress on the process.
There you go.
The only saving grace is that every meeting follows Robert's First Order.
Yeah.
And the public is welcome to speak at the time that the public is welcome to speak. Otherwise, the discussions happen openly.
Open. Well, what's contested, can we move forward on the 11th? For a meeting and to make notice of it?
Well, you guys need to tell me if that's enough time to get stuff together.
A week from today?
The problem with a week from today, to be honest, would be it's easier for us to decide amongst ourselves, but... Well, I guess it's really up to you guys, whichever you want, 11th or 25th?
Do it right now?
Right. You guys decide a date, Larry and I just tack along, go with the flow?
Yeah. I'm fine with either.
11th?
Yep. What time?
What time?
7:00 is gonna be good.
Anytime after 3:00 is good with me.
Okay. Same here?
4 o'clock?
4 o'clock.
Ouch.
And you can use this room.
What kind of use is this?
The library.
We'll have to come up with a name for sure.
Oh, that's the one that you found by the... okay.
For now, we're gonna call it the library subcommittee.
I think that's what we called it in the meeting.
4 o'clock?
On the 11th.
Okay, and in the meantime, we can gather up as much information as possible. But I was under the impression that at the meeting is when we would start gathering information.
Well, I like to gather information before all I can, you know?
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
So it's at 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock on the 11th.
So about.
Okay, we're going around here from council, do you have any more that you want to raise?
I'm starting with you.
Just some documents, more documents. I'm still waiting for the documents relating to when the state took over issuing city business licenses. Transcripts or language or, I know they had to give us notes.
Yeah.
I'd like to see those. And also, I've been poring over ordinances regarding nuisances and abatements and all this good stuff. I particularly would like to see the language somewhere, I haven't found it in these yet, regarding RVs and their placement. And their use within the city limits. I know we've discussed this before in years past. And I do know the conclusion was, whether it went through resolution into ordinance or not, that's why I would like to see this there, because I know we've discussed it. It's not, you're not allowed to live in an RV in the city limits. I believe we established maybe a short timeframe that a person could...
We should have it all on paper.
It's gotta be in there somewhere, I couldn't find it in here.
Do we, do we have an ordinance committee meeting scheduled in future? Could we get one, because maybe we talk about this and some other ordinances?
It'd be good, I would suggest or recommend that ordinance committee get...
To talk about some of those nuisance issues that you brought up, Steve, and the RV issue.
You've got the nuisance one, and then here, this one, one of them pretty much outlines the state parameters. And then what the city eventually adopted relative to the state parameters. And basically, I've come up so far, we don't have an ordinance problem. We have an enforcement problem. And a lot of it has to do with the language. And personally, I think you could clean it up and tighten it up. Wordy is so important. I mean, one word can change everything. And, you know, it's just...
Can you send out the, or maybe coordinate with Larry and let the other ordinance committee members know which ordinances you're looking at so that we can all come to that prepared and have a good discussion? Maybe fix some of those issues?
I would recommend getting the ordinance committee the same copies you gave me here.
3580.
3580, and this is...
845?
845, 845, 010 through 845, 600. I mean, it covers a lot of ground, it covers a lot of ground. And this 3580, I have, well, like I say, I would have some suggestions. I've went through and highlighted, you know, certain portions of it that I think would be relative to look at and discuss, like, again, it's the wording. In fact, one thing that came, kept popping up is you've got a code enforcement officer, which we do, I've met with him, and he expressed his frustration. And again, from years past, this is not a new, a new element we're dealing with here. It's been ongoing forever and ever, and that is enforcing the ordinances. And he, you know, expressed his frustrations. Anyway, I mean, there's already three members on it, so I can't chill out.
No, I hear you, and I've talked about it before, so I just really do like being keyed in on the items you're looking at and have a chance to discuss with the other members.
Well, anyway, the point was, like I say, one thing that kept jumping out was, you've got a code enforcement officer, then you've got a board that is appointed by the mayor. And I think it'd be interesting, it would be interesting to meet, to know, and it describes the rotation of members on that board. Whether it's...
They're rotated.
I mean, it describes it real well.
Yep.
Their positions are rotated similarly to council two or four years, so that... I'd be curious whatever it has.
I think that's happened only because of changes in city council members. Or this may be one of the first ones I served on, Gary Hawke, there were others, and they've already gone off, so...
Specifically though, I'm referring to the board.
Citizen...
Citizens... Oh, that, okay, I was in the...
Yeah.
I was just there with the committee.
You know, there was conflicting, conflicting powers, authorities. Again, it's back to, I think, it would be good to look at and they can clean it up. Again, enforcement is a problem, ordinance is not. Ordnance is great, they're solid. But anyway, that's pretty much it. Just like I say, that RV placement wording, and there's somewhere, I know it is, I know it is, you know it.
It's always a challenge.
Oh, nothing for me now, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
What?
No reports tonight.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. Just a couple of notes on the code enforcement thing. We had pre-COVID, I think some information from pre-COVID would be great. Because there was a lot of movement forward on code enforcement. And maybe sharing that information with the new council members would fill in the gap that... We did have a lot of movement forward pre-COVID, and the code enforcement team, including the attorney, made a lot of work. We had two people working on a lot of those issues. And it was kinda, it came to a halt because of COVID. And not being a bigger burden on people already dealing with the whole situation of everything going on, no employment, being terminated from work for different mandates and things like that. And so, code enforcement slowly came to a halt. And I think that would be a discussion that we probably need to bring that information of where they were and how it all slowly came to a halt. It's not that they're not doing their job, it's that, if I remember correctly, this body kinda said, okay, let's hold on before we start, you know, getting after people for their grasping so long. What, you know, what are they already dealing with? And do we want to be a bigger problem right now when so many things are in circles? I think that information would be great. As I beginning, you know, some historical knowledge of where they were and what, where it stopped. Because it, there was a lot of work being done. And then it just needed to kind of slow down. And then the other thing is, when it comes to code enforcement and ordinances, I would ask my fellow council members to make a decision on where we are going to go with ordinances and code enforcement. And I don't want to call anybody out, but basically, I'm gonna call us out and say, if we're going to make an ordinance and a decision, then stick with it. In the past, when I started, it was Chief Barkowski that was here. And his department and his officers went and enforced parking violations and RV parking on the street. And then we had a group of one or two citizens cry out loud that they were being harassed. And this body put a stop to the chief enforcing the law. And then it became, well, we're gonna make exceptions, and you know, I'm sorry you feel this way and your feelings are hurt. And then we, the officers are the ones that are getting the calls during the day. Say, hey, your officer just tacked my vehicle, what the heck? I'm gonna go to council, and council's gonna change their mind, right? So as we move forward, keep that in mind, because if we're gonna ask law enforcement and code enforcement officers to go and do the job, then we better be able to back them up when they do their job and not leave them hanging. Because that is exactly what happened at those meetings. We left law enforcement officers hanging out to dry. And that, I mean, we might as well just dissolve the ordinances if we're gonna make exceptions all the time. So as we progress... So as we progress, think of that.
Yeah.
And before we make a decision, think of if my neighbor that I've known my whole life comes to me and says, hey, I can't put a concrete pad on my property to park my RV like the law says, are you going to change your mind? And if so, do that before we establish said ordinances, right? So, and so that's my soap. Because I've worked on the public safety side, I hate being hung out to dry. And I know Reggie Barkowski back then was in that same. And I just watching his facial expressions when this body decided to make exceptions after they had been enforcing for weeks was kind of sad. So. The other thing is I've heard of several ordinances that are not enforceable. So I would ask both fire department and police department for some homework and to let us know which ordinances are there in spirit but are not really enforceable so that we can work with them and give them the, what they need to enforce that. I, I've heard several things, for example, the parking enforcement, parking on a yellow line, parking on designated parking areas in front of fire hydrant, different things that are not really a sizable offense. It's in spirit, but it can't be really done. So I don't, I don't know if it is or not, but I think if we have ordinances in place, we can get some feedback on, does it need a special wording? Does it need something that gives it teeth? That would be my homework assignment, you know, to them so that we can help them and back them up and support them. And then the other, the last thing is I would make a recommendation to adjust the agendas. And I don't know if it needs to be a vote or just a something or if even it can be done or if it's legal or not. So Larry, homework assignment?
Yes, I hear.
Would be, I, I've seen in other cities, in other meetings where they mark each agenda item. If motion or no motion is going to be taken, if the item is not listed for motion, then there is no motion made. And I would suggest that we as a council, whether it be listed as an item for motion or not, not make motions on things that are, for example, presentations or issues that are hot topics. If they're just being brought to us, that we take that information, we put it on the next meeting agenda, think about it, get some homework done, and then make a motion. And at the same time that we keep ourselves out of trouble in making hot topic decisions, we're also giving due process to the citizens to come in and support or not support whatever topic it is. Because if we have, you know, one citizen say, we'll go back to the RV problem. Hey, I can't do this. This is too much. You know, you're telling me to spend X amount of dollars on a concrete pad where I can park my RV and all that. There might be support or not. You know, there might be citizens that say, hey, my property value is going down. Enforce the law. My property value is going up. Don't enforce the law. It doesn't matter what it is, but it should be a due process where everybody has the opportunity to be heard. And if we don't announce that we're going to make a motion on a, on a subject, people on the opposition of whatever subject it is don't have proper notice. So I think we should have items listed and items announced that there's going to be a motion made on that. If that makes sense.
It makes sense. It would be, it would be an ordinance, it would be an ordinance that you have to look at, think.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's an RCW that guides it or not, so that would be, that would be it. I don't want to make the process longer, but I do feel that, you know.
So you're saying just on the agenda like vacation at Grant Street, parentheses, motion needed?
Yes, a motion to be made or possi, or possible for motion or something like that.
We put that on, we put that information on the agenda bill.
We put them on the bills already.
Yeah. But I think on, on, on everything because we've made, we've made motions on presentations. We've made motions on council reports. We've been motions on all sorts of things that are not announced.
Here's what I know for sure. I know that the order of the agenda is an ordinance already. So if you want to change the order of the agenda, you would have to do that by ordinance.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be changing the order, the order.
Not necessarily saying that.
Yeah.
You're saying if, if something is on the agenda and you want to consider a motion, you want motion.
Possible motion.
Or possible motion.
Or we think you don't need to make a motion, we just say no motion needed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's to look and see.
And that way it would be a guidance to say like, you know, we have some, somebody bring up something during this, let's say, our council. Right? And I bring a, a subject up and then all of a sudden the council decides, hey, let's make a vote on that. Well, we didn't give enough notice to the public to speak for or against. You know what I mean? So my item that I just brought would be listed for next week again and said, hey, okay, we'll put that on the agenda for next week. And we'll put it that there might be possible motion. So then that way those parties that are interested in that topic can show up.
So then we say no motion first, possible motion second.
I'm going to hear it from Roger.
I hate to keep breaking in, but I do know that some of the other meetings I cover, like the Dallas City Council, they list action items, discussion items.
Yes.
And it's, it's very clear what is going to be an action item and what's going to be a discussion item.
And that's, that seems better verbiage because that's the one work.
Yeah.
Are you the legal counsel?
Thanks, Roger. Anything else?
That is all I have.
You said action.
Discussion.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to make a quick comment. Lately, we've been working with both Senator's office and also Congressman Butler's office on CDS grants. These are earmarks that we're in the process of applying for and we're just starting on. And we got to get them completed here within the next week or two. But then we're, we're looking for potentially getting some grant money for the airport and for the solid waste treatment land and also revitalize downtown. And so anyway, these are great if we can get some of these, but it's very competitive. And it's, we've got a lot of work to do to, to get this, get these requests in. So just give me an FYI on that. We're working on it. So anyway, that's, I think that's what I have. That's all I have.
Well, I have a question for the council members. Because when I was doing my homework, I was, one of the things, I said, make sure your, your council will support you. It's come up, Phil almost gave the whole thing for me. I've had three different courses on Robert's Rules of Order. And the rules in the city council meeting and not, because we violate it awful lot of them. And people attending very often violate it because they don't know what the rules are. And it's things like talking over or interrupting, a lot of things like that. And it's getting better, but at the same time, it'll make our meetings better. We'll know where we are, which things I need to do, things that you'll need to do. If you agree, I'll put something together. So it's a very short discussion, but I think it'll help us all.
That sounds good. But just to clarify, violations of Robert rules in public meetings are not unique to the city of Old Mill Council. Pervasive throughout all public meetings.
Oh, yeah. It is. It's not, we're not special here. There's certain, certain things in there and there's others that I don't think I would want to bring into a council meeting at all.
Yeah.
A lot of it would make, some of these things that you raised less because we were following a certain pattern. And it impacts a lot of things, a lot of things. One of this, public comment, public comments are to be on what was discussed on the agenda, period. And normally, they're everywhere. So things like that, if we put a little bit of wording in there, we can get it corrected without, you know, hurting anybody's feelings or making anything bad. And the same with some of the discussions within the council. We're supposed to be debating, not discussing. Well, I'm a discussor and a half. So I don't think we'll ever get to that one. But if, if you agree, then I'll put together a short document or whatever. It won't be more than four or five hundred pages. No, it'd just be, just a little bit, but I, I didn't want to offend people. If, if you don't want to do that, then I'll leave it alone. I think it'll help our meetings quite a bit.
Yeah, I agree. I think if I may add that, again, one of the other things that I've seen in other meetings is you have the public comment in the beginning, public comment at the end. And, and sometimes some topics have public comment at, at the agenda item, right? And so when that is, it's written in the agenda so that the public also knows, okay, my, my only option to talk in this topic coming up is going to be either at the beginning and at the end, or on this certain one topic, they're going to allow public comment right at it.
Well, the specific public comment is that right now is at the end. And when we had, we had it just a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
A very upset group on the library thing. To have that group wait until the very end to say what they wanted would ruin the whole point.
No, and that's, and that's with that agenda item, it can be put, we're going to allow public comment right at that topic.
Yep.
And then that way, we know and the public knows, yes, you're going to have, you know, public comment right now when, when it's the agenda item and not have to wait. Or, you know, if it's a smaller topic.
Yeah.
It's just.
It just goes to the end.
But then it's listed on here so everybody knows coming in. And then we have people that, they don't show up to council meetings every time. So if it kind of guides them.
It might help. But there, there are a lot of times an issue will come up that we had no idea it was going to be. A lot of people wanting to speak out. When we see that, we adjust it to move it up there so that they get it. And then they've had their chance to say, well, it's fresh. And I, I think that's just accommodating the public as much as we can.
So is that like discussion, no public comment?
No, I don't put that anywhere.
No, you wouldn't put that in there, but if it was allowed, that it would be noted, public comment at this item.
Yeah. If we know it's a sensitive item, that's going to bring a lot of people in, particularly. Sometimes you don't know.
No, no. And I would like to add, I think you've been doing an excellent job conducting these meetings and.
Tell me that next time when I do my little, I'm not going to become a dictator, but I, one of the type of things I was always good for everybody.
There's always room for improvement.
I'm not planning to lose any friends about this. Well, Eli May just threw a gavel at me.
I would not.
And we don't have any public here. Do we have public on the line for public comments? If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
And move second to adjourn city council for April 4, 2022, and the next one will be on April 18. And you have a meeting on that 11? At least one.
At least one.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.